... meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening, everyone. This evening, we have a hard stop at 7:00, which is why we've sort of reversed some items on the agenda, so items on the agenda that require a quorum we've put up front. As we do each meeting, we'll begin with public audience. Joan? Yeah.
Yeah.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive.
Yeah.
I'm very pleased with the selection of all the people appointed to serve on the newly-formed Economic Development Commission. All the seven people are not part of the political spectrum, but people who are willing to serve the community in the best possible way. Economic development in Simsbury is extremely challenging due to geography. Most businesses require large traffic patterns. To increase foot traffic, Simsbury is lacking regular and reliable routes for transportation. For many years, we have created a continuous trail for bicycles that can transport bicycles throughout the state. The rails-to-trails have provided contiguous trails that could be used in the future for single-rail transportation. Reliable transportation brings people to Simsbury for employment and businesses that can flourish along rail lines for access to and from the surrounding areas. Simsbury is deficient in internet access. These are areas in Simsbury where there is no connectivity. There's a need for more access points to increase connectivity. Reliable internet access is another tool for economic development. For many years, the library has denied the move of SCTV to the basement of the library to increase the resources that can be used by the community. The library has all the connectivity needed with the entire infrastructure on Hop Meadow Street to provide an upscale media center with SCTV. This move would provide more room in Eno Hall for activities for seniors. The October 7, 2018 Hartford Current had an article about libraries creating makerspaces that offer high-tech entrepreneurs and lobbyists. The Simsbury Library has created makerspaces for the community and could expand its offerings. The Hartford Current article recently stated, and I quote, "Connecticut's pushed to create new collaborative, high-tech work and educational space for entrepreneurs, computer wizards, craft hobbyists, and kids appearing to gain momentum." Having SCTV in the library would create another collaborative effort to coordinate increased media for business in the community. The Public Building Committee has had SCTV on their agenda for many years, and it is time that the town take a proactive role to join the growing need for collaborative services in the library and the expansion of services provided by SCTV. The Economic Development Commission should research traffic patterns, square footage available for use, and land available for businesses in Simsbury. Another driving force in economic development is the mill rate that affects taxes and increases the overhead of businesses. Simsbury's mill rate is the highest in the area and should be reduced to be competitive. The Economic Development Commission should study the surrounding areas where business is thriving and develop a plan to develop incubated businesses to support large companies. St. Bernard's Roman Catholic Church is up for sale in Tarahoffel. The task of repurposing the church should be on the agenda for the Economic Development Commission. The town of Simsbury should study transforming the Tarahoffel Center through a collaborative effort with the surrounding colleges. Many students studying town planning and architecture would enjoy the challenge of working on transforming a critical land area to increase economic development. Another component of economic development is tourism. The town has a kiosk at the parking lot on Wilcox Street that is deteriorating and an eyesore with a baseball cap and old signs posted on the interior. The kiosk should be replaced, demolished, or moved to another location. The ticket booth on Iron Horse Boulevard that Simsbury Performing Arts Center has given to the town should be used as a visitors bureau with a display of all brochures highlighting the town, businesses, and activities. It appears that Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Organization has decided not to ask the town for money to be included in the town budget. This gesture should not negate the need for improved and timely delivery of services. The Board of Selectmen should invite AMR to come before the Board, to educate the Board on all their services, and decide whether a volunteer ambulance organization can meet the future needs of the community. On October 1, 2018, the police log that I reviewed had seven automobile larcenies and one motor vehicle theft. The larcenies occurred with cars unlocked or keys left in the cars. Leaving cars unlocked and keys in the car have given the perpetrators easy access to people's personal property. We no longer live in a safe and secure environment, and we should be mindful of the consequences of our actions. I am very disappointed with the Board of Finance that has canceled its regularly-scheduled meeting due to a lack of quorum in September and scheduled a special meeting on October 22nd. Many items on their agenda require transferring money and payments on many projects that created delays. Our elected officials should take their responsibilities seriously or not run for office, and all my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, news feed on Facebook, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Simsbury Forum.
Joan?
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to speak on public audience? Mr. Kallishman?
Robert Kallishman, Senator. Thank you for allowing me to address the Board. And I notice on your agenda, proposed appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Here we go again. It's a white elephant. It's been a white elephant ever since its inception. The purpose of it is to develop economic development. What do we develop in town? Pizza pollers and liquor stores. And now, what do we have? We have down by the new gas station, the Cumberland Farm Gas Station. What are we going to have? We're going to have a liquor store now. That's the econo-- that's what we're developing down. Pizza pollers and... and... and package stores. The important thing is, you all look at, and you all claim, I can remember from Dave Ryan's day. Dave Ryan, we're going to develop industry and everything. You haven't developed anything. And now, you're going to spend all your time on the Economic Development Agency. And the only thing you're going to do is you're going-- I can see it coming. You're going to have two political Democratic chief, and he'll be Frank, and the Republicans will put up there, and that's what you're going to have. That's all you're going to have there. So, you're just passing the baton to somebody else, but it's still all political. I didn't come for that. What I came for, to announce that I'm running for state representative, and my spot on the ballot is five I. I'm at the bottom, the very bottom. But what I'd like to point out to you is, when does it end, really, with this more-or-less feather bedding? And now, we have a situation, we have a state representative, and my opinion is taking over a quarter of a million to a half a million dollars in campaign fund money. And what does he do? Plus, he gets paid. And what have we got here? And the latest thing is, where years ago, the old timers, if you gave anybody a drink of whiskey, two ounces of whiskey, they put you in jail or they closed a saloon. What do we have today? I'll show you what we have today. We have a situation where with my tax money and your tax money, $250 was spent for pizza. Our tax money going so our representative Hampton can have a pizza party, and he has a pizza party for volunteers. If I go out or you go out and do it on Election Day, you could go to jail. But here he is, he's paying off people with our tax money for a pizza poller. And don't look, don't, you know, don't think it's me. Here it is, right on the election enforcement commission's, his October 18 report. It's right here. It's right, right, right there. And the amount is $115.10 for pizza poller. And it's wrong. And nobody else does it, and why should the Simsbury representative be able to do it? And then, of course, the other thing that I have to bring before you, these roads are in terrible shape. You have the show class, the show spot is Hop Meadow Street. Drive up and down on it. It's all, it's all bumps. And it's not safe, because somebody hit one of those bumps going any length of speed, they're going to boom, and they're going to go right off into the sidewalk. And what are we doing about that? And that's, that's state. So, what has our representative been doing about the highways? Zip. He hasn't done one thing but collect his pay. And it's not right. And we have one, one situation after another, and now, now we have a situation where we have people that live out of town coming in and taking 1,000 ballots, absentee ballot applications, 800 absentee ballot application. What do you do when you live out of town? You don't even live in town, and you come and you sign, and you, and you're given 800 absentee ballot applications. So, I can continue on that, but these things have to be corrected. And, you know, and the way to correct them is not wait for the legislature to correct it, because I don't think they will. But for you people, if you're passing ordinances for various other situations with the, what you're going to, now you're going to come up and you're going to have a, where you're going to market a new town manager. You're going to make that political.
Thank you, Mr. Kallishman. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public audience tonight? Okay. And we'll move on to Selectmen Action. Item A, our tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective October 10, 2018, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $10,894.03 and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the refunds? So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item B is a purchasing card agreement. So, the town has been looking into getting what are known as purchasing cards, which are essentially corporate cards that employees can use when they're traveling for work or making other approved purchases. Maria, would you mind just elaborating briefly on why this is really a best practice?
So, we are finding times, at times now, that it's becoming increasingly difficult for us to make purchases without being able to make online purchases or to have P cards, essentially. What we're often having to do now is our employees are making purchases on behalf of the town on their personal credit cards, which is not ideal. There are a lot of efficiencies that would be gained by having P cards. It's going to streamline our accounts payable process. We're going to have more real-time monitoring with purchases. It's going to reduce the volume of checks that our staff has to cut out of the finance office. A couple of key points I do want to note is that this particular purchasing card program is managed through the Department of Administrative Services at the state level. Lots of communities have been doing this for a decade or more at this point, so the program is pretty tried and tried and true. External fraudulent transactions, if in fact there was one, JP Morgan does cover that. That would be the vendor. And if an internal fraudulent transaction occurred by an employee, as long as the employee that was responsible for that is terminated, they will also cover that at 100%. So, one other point I would like to bring up is that the program, part of the automatic feature is what's called a cash back option. So, in theory, an employee could receive cash back. That is not something that the finance director or I are comfortable with, and we were able to verify with the vendor that this, this feature would not be enabled on our accounts. So, employees would not be able to do that. There are also a number of internal controls that would be incredibly important, such as limits, dollar limits on single-track transactions as well as aggregate transactions. And there are certain merchant codes that people would just not be able to make purchases at, so that also helps to minimize any potential with fraud. And then, the last item is that the state does receive annual cash rebates based on the dollar value of spend. And so, by participating in the program, we would receive some cash back, essentially, that we could then put into our general fund.
I love my credit card points, so this is just, it's good for the taxpayer.
It's like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Great, thank you.
Any questions for Maria? Okay. Is there a motion effective October 10, 2018, to submit the State of Connecticut Purchasing Card Agreement Addendum and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the purchasing card program?
So move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Item C is the Acceptance of Local Bridge Grant Program. We got word from the Connecticut Department of Transportation that we'll be receiving a $364,000 grant that will help pay for the rehabilitation of two bridges. To receive the money, we need to accept the grant award. Is there anything that staff wanted to add on this?
Um, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
This, again, the application was approved by the Board in January shortly before I got here, but the language about, "And accepting the grant award should it be received," that piece wasn't there, so it's just really to clean up.
Sure.
And we do have funds available for the local match from a '17-'18 capital appropriation for bridges.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion effective October 10, 2018, to accept the local bridge program fiscal year '19 grant in the amount of $364,000 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute all documents related to the grant award?
So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you both for your work on this. Item D is the Proposed Revisions to the Assistant Planning Director Position. So, these next set of items come out of recommendations from the Personnel Subcommittee. At our meeting a couple of weeks ago, we reviewed and endorsed some proposed changes to this job description. Are there any, it's pretty minor, are there anything you wanted to highlight in particular, Maria?
Yes, just, there is one additional bullet point that Mike and I discussed after your meeting that we did add, and we'd really like for our professional staff in the planning develop department to develop some expertise around open space management and to have some staff who could help us with things like land management plans and things of that nature. So, we are proposing one additional bullet that the Personnel Committee did not see, which is that this person could assist us with open space management and management of our agriculture leases.
Okay, great.
Maria, does that require any additional training or professional development that's going to be required to do that?
Sure. It'll depend on whomever replaces Mike. We may have a planner who has that expertise, and if we don't have a planner who doesn't have that expertise, it's certainly something we can support for professional development. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion effective October 10, 2018, to approve the proposed modifications to the job description for the Assistant Planning Director as presented?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. The other job description we looked at was the Children's Reference Librarian position. And this one was really trying to just better align that job description with the Adult Services Librarian. Anything you wanted to add to that?
That's...
That pretty much does it.
I think so.
Okay. Are there any questions on this one? Is there a motion effective October 10, 2018, to approve the proposed modifications to the job description for the Children's Reference Librarian as presented?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item F is the Proposed Professional Travel Policy. So, Maria's developed a proposed professional travel policy that was reviewed by the Personnel Subcommittee, establishing guidelines of how business travel will be approved and what reimbursable expenses would be. One of the things that we recommended during the meeting was to put a specific cap on the allowable meal allowance so that there's no room for interpretation, and it's clear what's acceptable and what isn't. And other than that, we were, we were supportive. So, is there anything you wanted to add to that, Maria?
Sure. So, this was something that was important to me that we established. We currently do not have guidelines for our employees regarding professional travel nor how those reimbursements work. So, this will be twofold. It does provide guidance to employees in terms of what's reimbursable, what's not reimbursable. But we're also now requiring, or would be requiring, that employees provide us with original itemized receipts, and that those receipts also be submitted within 30 days of the date of travel to make sure that we're processing these reimbursements in a timely manner. For overnight travel, there's also approvals that need to be received before any commitments are made in terms of lodging, registration, airfare. That way, we can, A, make sure that the professional development is appropriate as well as budgeted.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Is there a provision in here, given that we just passed the credit card agreement, that you have to use the credit card to get reimbursed?
Right. So, we will. The expectation will be for staff members that have P cards that they would use their P cards, and then for staff members that don't have P cards that they could still use their, their personal cards.
Okay. Because where I'm going with that is, and I probably should have asked it before, but if, if interest accrues on the P card, whose responsibility is it?
Right. So, we should not have interest accruing on our P card?
(laughing). So, because in my world, if interest accrues, I have to pay for it personally.
Correct, correct. So, those bills will be coming directly to finance, and we are fortunate in that we actually run our payables on a weekly basis. And so, if there was a problem with that occurring, we would certainly, we, being myself and the finance director, would need to be addressing that with, with a staff member pretty quickly.
So, even if someone didn't submit their expense report on time, you could still see that an item was about to go over the 30 days or whatever it is?
Yes.
Yeah.
How much, I mean, given your, how much staff travel is there? I mean, is it, is it, I mean, you could probably tell me it varies from year to year. That's an easy answer. But, I mean, is it, is it 10, 10 grand, 20 grand? I mean, what do we?
I can get that number for you. I can't...
Well, that's why I'm asking that, is if it, is it, if it is of any volume, and thinking what just Sean just said, leveraging back to that card, I didn't read, I have to say, all 86 pages of the agreement, the credit card agreement, but if there's any expense management software capabilities, reporting capabilities that are in there, we should be leveraging that if we're adopting this new travel policy and the card for all usage to make sure, well, to assist the staff to meet those 30-day timelines. I mean, use the technology, it's probably buried in there that I'm sure they offer.
Yeah, it's actually quite nice in the P card program that there are reports that we can pull out, and we also have real-time ability to monitor purchases that are actually happening. And it does have a lot of reporting features, which is fantastic.
Good. So, do the training on that. I also saw there's a capability for cash advances in that. I know we're backtracking.
Yeah.
Take, take, yeah, right. Okay, you said that, right.
Yes.
Or alerts, or whatever.
There are budget line items for each department, right, for travel?
Correct, there are, there are. In terms of overnight travel, that's fairly limited to mostly our department head team, but we do have a number of professional staff members and other staff members who do travel quite a bit, maybe more locally, so it might be, say, a one- or two-day workshop that's more local, and the costs are much more minimal.
Yeah.
But I can get an aggregate number.
No, I'm not concerned. I'm saying if it's of any meaningful volume, then overlay that back on any of the software reporting capabilities that comes with that card and leverage it for your expense management so that you're enabling your employees to meet the obligations and, or assist them that you're laying out in this policy.
I would just remind them that if those aren't submitted and interest accrues, that's a non-budget item, so they got to come in here and explain to the six of us why we accrued a non-budgeted item, even if it's five cents.
Sure.
I meant to say that, too. Sean added that one.
And how they're going to pay for it.
Because then they got to, then they got to deal with me asking questions.
That's enough of an incentive to pay your interest.
Well, and just, one mechanism I found in the past that's been very effective in making sure folks are submitting their receipts timely is that we will establish a cutoff date by a certain date every month that the P card receipts need to be in by, and if they are not in by those dates, there's a feature in the P card system where we can go in and turn off somebody's card. And the cards become so convenient from a purchasing perspective, that is, that is an incredible motivator to make sure folks will submit on time.
That's good.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Maria on this one? Okay. Is there a motion effective October 10, 2018, to adopt the professional travel policy as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
I can't believe you have...
So, these couple of items are not flashy things, but they are so important, and I'm so glad that, that you prioritized them and worked on them because they're making our town run like a more professional organization. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item G, our proposed general wage increases. So, these are for unaffiliated positions. The Personnel Subcommittee at our meeting discussed these wage increases for our non-union employees, and ultimately, the recommendation we came to is 2.25%. That number was determined by looking at what's happening in the marketplace, nearly 100 other communities around the state, and that 2.25% is really on par, if not even, if I recall, a little lower.
Just a touch, but...
But right on par.
Right on par.
With those other communities. And since we have four of our department heads that are still on probationary status since they're new, this wouldn't apply to them until they, they are past the probationary status, and then it would be retroactive if we, if we're supportive of doing that.
Perspective. Perspective.
Oh, prospective, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. So, on that, are there any, are there any questions on this recommendation?
I think these make sense. Obviously, I think there, there's a lot of ways to look at this, and as the submission notes, I mean, there's different numbers for different union negotiations, and one might pick that apart, and, well, we're being unfair to one place, but there's also healthcare components and other costs or payments that are associated with that. So, you really need to dive into all the nitty-gritty to understand what the percentages are for each thing.
Yeah.
So, if folks are looking at it and confused, you know, I'm sure we can help explain the end result is, because that's, that's a big part of this.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk about you while you're here, but the town manager's not part of this.
Correct.
Traditionally, the first selectman was part of these requests. So, because we have a contract, we do that separately?
Correct.
That's good, good to point out.
Okay.
Good point.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we didn't overlook that. Obviously, we focus elsewhere, so...
Yeah. And one other thing that came out of the discussion, just as an FYI, is that we've asked Maria to do an analysis of the 12 or so positions, just looking at what the person is getting paid today, what's the marketplace look like, so we can ensure that people are being appropriately compensated. So, is there a motion effective October 10, 2018, to approve a 2.25% general wage increase for unaffiliated staff in a non-probationary status, retroactive to July 1, 2018, and that the salary ranges for those classifications be adjusted accordingly?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Can I have a motion effective October 10, 2018, to approve a 2.25% general wage increase for unaffiliated staff in a probationary status upon successful completion of their probationary period, and that the salary ranges for those classifications be adjusted accordingly?
So move.
Second.
Mike's got it.
Mike got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item H is the Town Manager Performance Review Process and Instrument. And Chris was good enough to put together a summary of where we landed and a timeline of next steps that I thought would be helpful if he shared.
Oh, thank you. I'll just take two or three minutes, and the Personnel Subcommittee is chaired by Eric. Sean and I are also members, so we worked collectively on this with participation from Maria. Most of this, you've actually reviewed in chunks before, so the intent here is really just to bring it together into one place and show what the document might look like. For example, we reviewed and approved Maria's goals previously. So, with that said, I'm just indicating that the overall structure to the review will have three pieces to it. We've identified a list of six attributes that we'll evaluate the town manager on. Then, a second category will be a review and rating of four goal categories. However, there's actually a subset of those goals, there's technically 32 formal goals that Maria has. But what we will do for...
It's a light year.
Yes. So, next year, we'll double it. So, what we will be doing, as you, as you remember, is there's a rate, we've created rating factors, and we're going to rate each category of the six attributes, and I'm going to each rate, rate each category of the full goal areas. And then, at the very end of the process, each individual will do an overall rating for the town manager. So, that's the overall structure, and that's what you see in the document, is you see So that's the overall structure and that's what you see in the document, is you see the document pulling all that together, uh, with the actual goals and the actual attributes and, and the actual rating categories. The process for the review, and again, that's, we're just, um, going in a little bit more detail of what we agreed to previously, uh, the town manager goals are established at the start of each fiscal year in June. Um, prior to the review, the town manager completes a self-review. Each of us, uh, will input our feedback into an online application. We've talked, for example, about using Survey Monkey. A consolidated document will be developed. Uh, for each category that's being reviewed, there will be dots that will show where each select person identified their rating and then there will be the average rating that will be identified. And it will also include any notes the individuals had put in, um, so all comments will be presented. The rankings and comments will not be identified by author, uh, will just be there. And then the Board of Selectmen will meet to review the document and then after that, uh, we will meet with the town manager to review, review her performance. Uh, so that's the overall process and then we have the specific timelines. Uh, really, our intent is to be able to do the review with Maria in the November 14th. Um, to do a, to meet, to do, to look at our review on the 14th and then be able to meet with Maria on November 26th to do her review. So you'll see that the dates are, um, are lining up for that. What we wanted to do this first year, our overall process will be to do a mid-year review in November and then a full year review in June. This year, because it's really the first year, we wanted to do a complete full review in November. It's also a great way for us to road test this process. In the future, what we will be doing is an abbreviated review in November and then a final formal review in June. So with that said, you know, what's laid out in front of you is just a sample of what the document could look like, again, populating in all the attributes and the goals.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any questions?
Just to follow on, we looked at a substantial number of different communities. Maria and, and Chris and Eric did a great job of putting together some, some comparisons. We had some pretty spirited discussion around what were the rating categories, you know, we can certainly revisit that. You know, there's, there's been a time in the HR space that we've gone to the outstanding and above and 67 categories and now we're actually going back to the did you do your job or not realm, which is interesting, so, but, you know, again, this is something that we can continue to evolve as needed, but, I mean, it's meant to be an objective, fair and transparent process for what, what our new form is, right? And to, to make sure that we're being honest and holding Maria accountable, but also giving Maria an opportunity to, to share all the accomplishments, so I, I think it's, it's meant to be a very fair and, I think, objective, objective thing, so, like, nice job on everybody's part of putting this together.
Thank you. And, and this also, we're gonna learn things, we haven't done this before and we'll make some changes if we need to.
The accompanying progress reports, um, those are, those are populated by Maria yourself, is that correct?
Uh, the progress report that I drafted for you?
So if you go into the-
Yes.
The package, it's just, so the, the, oh, I mean, for our purposes here, it's page 120.
Yeah, it's the goals with the update, right?
Oh, yes.
So those are, those, and then they're populated though accordingly by, you're the author of your own progress report, is that correct? Or it's a collaborative with-
Uh, I just provided a status update on the projects that had been identified.
Yep. So what I would envision is we would have a document like this as each of us went into the review to fill out the review.
And so that's, I mean, I, clearly, it's a progress, it's a living document, it's continually updated up until the-
Sure.
Point of which we were working through this, but you're the only, Mike, you're the only author of these, of the information in here, correct?
Uh, I did on one or two items get some feedback from staff, particularly the, the bike projects. I'm not directly managing those.
And then accordingly, anybody else who goes underneath the same process will have the same opportunity to author their own progress report to add in, um, color, so to speak, and so that, great, okay.
Um, can I-
Yeah.
So is there any self-evaluation included in this? So do, are you going to fill out your own for-
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's actually something I, um, I implemented with my staff as well this year when we were going through their annual review. Um, I think that's helpful as a supervisor and I think that would probably be helpful for you all as well, so, um, we had talked about me doing a self eval as well.
Item two on the-
Item two.
On the timeline.
On the timeline.
Okay, excellent.
So we know what you're doing on Halloween night.
Right.
It's gonna come back with a lot of kinds of smudges on it.
Well, that chocolate smear right down the end.
That is kind of, we, we can probably be flexible by the end.
Yeah, I think so. It's just a deadline.
That must be Maria's doing it while she's going door-to-door with her daughter, so.
That's probably true. Are there any other questions or feedback? There's no action to take on this, did you just want to give the board an update?
I, I really wanna commend everybody for really taking basically a blank sheet of paper and coming up with, I think, a really, really good starting point and plan and, uh, good stuff, guys.
I think Maria should do one of these on us.
Careful what you wish for.
It's called 360, right?
I'm good with feedback.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, uh, those are our, uh, selectman actions tonight and moving on to appointments and resignations. The first is the Board of Assessment Appeals, and I just wanted to give a little context on this one. The Personnel Subcommittee at our last meeting discussed appointing three alternate members to the Board of Assessment Appeals to help handle volumes in 2019, primarily, I'm told, that's related to the car tax. Uh, so tonight we'll be voting on a recommendation that came from the Democratic Town Committee and we're waiting on a recommendation from the Republican Town Committee and then our thought was that the third member, we put out an announcement in News and Announcements hoping to identify some unaffiliated, uh, people that, that the Personnel Subcommittee would be able to recommend. So is there a motion effective October 10th, 2018 to appoint Regina Pin as an alternate member to the Board of Assessment Appeals with a term expiring on December 2nd of 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item B is a hearing officer. Is there a motion effective October 10th, 2018 to appoint Stephen McDonald as a hearing officer with a term expiring December 2nd of 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Now, item C is the, uh, appointment of members to the New Economic Development Commission. So the Economic Development Work Group, which consisted of Cheryl and I, interviewed close to 20 people, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, 20 people. I am, I say this again and again, I am continually impressed by the quality and the passion of people who offer to serve our town and I'm really thankful to everyone who applied and I'm excited about the, it was a very difficult decision, I'm excited about the seven, uh, people that we settled on and, of course, we used the, uh, policy resolution where we identified different roles such as tourism, uh, business, et cetera. Uh, so we're making sure that they have a breadth of expertise. Cheryl, is there anything you wanted to add to the process?
Um, well, I, I, just to echo your sentiments, I wanna thank everybody who came out to interview because, um, we learned a lot in the process about, um, what people think about where economic development is going and what their vision is and I'd like to thank the two members who, of the new Economic Development Commission who are here tonight, um, to get us going. Um, we saw a lot of enthusiasm and we very much appreciate that and I think as a Board of Selectmen, and I'll just speak for myself here, but I'm very excited to do our part to, to provide clearer guidance and to have a discussion about goals and the mission of the new Economic Development Commission. So there's, there's work to do on both sides and I'm very much looking forward to it.
Yeah, me too. Uh, is there, uh, any, any questions from the board on, on, on the process or, or anything else? Okay. Uh, is there a motion effective October 10th, 2018 to appoint the following people to the Economic Development Commission? Robert Crowther as a member with, uh, marketing and communication expertise with a term expiring October 10th, 2021. Ron Jodis as a member representing the development community with a term expiring October 10th, 2021. Brooke Freeman as a member representing the business community with a term expiring October 10th, 2021. Peter Van Loon as a member representing the business community with a term expiring October 10th, 2021. William Freeman as a member representing the business community with a term expiring October 10th, 2020. Lori Feldman as a member with marketing and communications expertise with a term expiring October 10th, 2020. And Caroline Meckel as a member with tourism expertise with a term expiring October 10th, 2020. And I just wanted to add that these are staggered terms, so three folks have a three-year term and two, or is it two-year term, just to clarify.
And Bob and Peter are here tonight, so we thank you very much for, for coming tonight and joining us.
Absolutely.
So I'll, I'll make that motion and then I have a question after somebody.
Sure.
I'll second it.
Sean?
Why did we pick the 10th today, other than we normally do Jan. 1 terms or co-terminists with the Board of Selectmen? So this would be out of term with all the other boards and commissions we do, I just realized that.
That's a good question.
That is a good point, especially since we put a specific date in for reporting to the Board of Selectmen, we should probably, which I think was the end of October.
Yeah, so this wouldn't-
That wouldn't sync up with-
Yeah, that's a really good question, Sean.
The date we just put in there.
Was there a rationale, Maria?
Sure, sure. So, um, the ordinance did reference sort of the very first appointment, um, which is that they would be staggered for the first time, I'm sorry, for the first time, uh, it would be three folks for two years, uh, and then, um, four folks for three years. So that is sort of staggering, but also that we're creating the commission at sort of an off-cycle, um, so wanting to get those folks appointed now and if we're appointing them for two years or three years, that would be two or three years from today's date. So that was sort of the rationale and thought process behind it. We do have a handful of boards and commissions, probably just depending on when they were created, that have some dates that are slightly off-cycle. Um, as we've been working through the Unaffiliated Voter Work Group, we have been finding, uh, again, sort of a handful anomalies where we do have some things that are off-cycle.
Okay. I mean, I'm, uh, no objection to it, it's just-
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
It'll be- Just gotta pay attention.
Yes.
Of that, and you'll have potentially lame duck Board of Selectmen's appointing the Economic Development Commission members.
Oh, depending on where this is.
Right. Versus incoming Board of Select members.
So if you put it after the Board of Selectmen term starts, you will have whatever the new Board of Selectmen is that year.
But the way the ordinance is written, which is another reason why I hate ordinances, um, we can't, we can't extend the term arbitrarily, we have to go with a two and three-year term. There's no flexibility in the ordinance.
That's true.
Well, let's just do it. Yeah, but we'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much.
Had to get a dig in on ordinances, Chris.
Which is ironic, given that we're gonna be together to work on an ordinance Friday morning, I think, right?
I think a purchasing agreement is a better idea.
Yeah, Maria?
Thank you, I, I did just wanna quickly add, um, the Planning Commission did meet last night and they have decided to appoint Bill Rice as their ex officio member to the EDC, uh, and Jackie Battos was appointed, uh, and that was included in the packet as the zoning, uh, the zoning commission's ex officio member.
Okay, great, thank you.
And just to be clear, do we appoint our own or does it stay with Eric?
I-
The first selectman deciding, because it was unclear in the ordinance how that happens. Because there's difference between liaison and ex officio member.
Hmm.
Well, but those are two other elected boards appointing ex officio members. Oh, you mean to the new Economic Development Commission?
Correct.
Yeah, why didn't they call them liaisons?
Because they're not. It says the town manager should be an ex officio member with full participation rights. Other ex officio members may be added by a separate resolution to the Board of Selectmen.
But they don't have to be, they could just be liaisons.
I'll just, um, in the policy resolution, um, that you had adopted, it was an ex officio, was member of the Board of Selectmen per se liaison, um, because again, I think we did that with the understanding that, that had been maybe sorted out at your organizational meeting, that Eric was going to be the liaison, so the policy resolution does say member of the Board of Selectmen per se liaison?
I'm not objecting to it, it's just-
No, that's-
Two, two commissions vote on it and one, it's decided by the first selectman.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. What do you mean?
As a liaison, the first selectman controls liaison appointments. If it's an ex officio member representative, we vote on-
So you're talking about the liaison to the EDC?
It's not a liaison, it's an ex officio member.
From the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.[1560.23]